Board of Supervisors meeting, our regular meeting for May 26. And as all, we start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please all stand. My Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, just as for all. As always, our minutes here will be recorded. First business is receipt of the minutes from the BOS meeting on May the 12th. Do the other supervisors have an opportunity to look these over? Okay, I'll take that as a yes. Can I have a motion to accept the minutes?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Yes.
Aye.
Thank you. The minutes are accepted. Other business, authorization to approve the updated Turellan Trail lease agreement between Lower Gwinnett and Gwinnett Mercy University. Craig, we've had a lease agreement with Merck for quite some time. Could you explain to everybody why we need to update one and if there were any changes?
Yes, we've had an agreement with the Turellan Trail, which is the trail around the dams down at Merck, the old Moore product building property. And Merck sold the property to Gwinnett Mercy University, I would say back in the fall. And since then, I've been, I've reached out to Gwinnett Mercy just to update that lease agreement to have Gwinnett Mercy as the owner and us as the lead. So we have gone through, they changed solicitors, we've changed solicitors. And there was a new finance director over at Gwinnett Mercy who was really handling this and he retired. So I had to deal with a couple, a different CFO and a different solicitor over there. But we got it done and it's in front of you, or at least it should be.
Yeah, you set it out on a separate cover, correct?
Yes, and so it's a yearly lease. It's basically the same terms that we had before. We, each side can terminate the lease but give six months' notice to each side. It's a lease for a dollar a year. We can use it for walking, hiking, walking, biking. We cannot use the ponds for any swimming or fishing, just like it was before. So although it took a while, it's basically the same lease that we had before, but everyone had to take a look at it.
Okay, I looked at it, looked pretty detail. Tom, is there any changes here in the lease?
The only, some changes about remedy clauses. In a standard commercial agreement, you see things about about confessions of judgment and attorney's fees. Realistically, you're not likely to breach this lease for a dollar a year. So those are changes that were not in the old lease. But in a commercial lease, they are very standard. There's nothing, you know, every bank loan I do, every mortgage I do, every commercial lease I do has those terms in it. So I don't think it's oppressive or out of the ordinary, but it is a change from what you had before.
Yeah, in the last lease, I don't recall, and I couldn't find it before this meeting, I didn't recall an indemnification paragraph. That's normal in this type of lease, Tom?
For us, I didn't indemnifying the university, absolutely. That's why we have insurance and you.
Okay, okay.
That's it.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the supervisors?
And just to be clear, we're not responsible for the dam. Either of the dams.
No, just the trail.
Maintenance.
Maintenance of the trails and around the trails.
Thank you.
Are there any comments from members of the public? I'll take that as a no. Can I have a motion to accept the lease?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Lease is accepted.
Thank you.
Thank you, yeah. Now we have an authorization for a Phase 2 study on the 409 Old Bethlehem Pike property. Phase, there's a Phase 1 that was done on this property and a Phase 2 that's now recommended that we do.
And Mark, could I stop there for a second?
Sure.
Over the holiday weekend, we were working very diligently on finding documents about this Phase 2 that we wanted to move on. The owners or the sellers now were able to find some documentations that back in 1996, the 600 gallon tank was removed, removed with it by a certified company. And they had documentation going back and forth with DEP. What they don't have is just, I think, Tom, maybe is a closeout report by DEP.
There is no record at DEP right now. What Jim and his company are going to do is contact DEP with the new information that was supplied. I had contacted the broker, he got from the executor of the estate. I'm thrilled he got them since they're from 1996 and had the paperwork with account numbers and things to be sent to the state. So we're going to verify that. The latest recommendation from Jim's company is that we probably do not need the Phase 2 because it appears everything was done properly. It's a bookkeeping issue to make sure it was closed out properly. Because what happens, you send a letter to the DEP explaining how the tank was removed and test borings proving that there's nothing in the ground. That letter doesn't appear in the papers that was sent to us by the broker and not by, and not by the records that the engineers found when they did their request for DEP for information. But they don't believe that it's more of a bookkeeping issue probably than a actual problem of there being something in the ground right now. I would recommend that we authorize the Phase 2 just because we won't have another meeting to do so if anything else goes wrong. I don't think we're going to need it. So the motion could be, if needed, authorize Craig to go forward with it because I think it's highly unlikely that we're going to need it, but I'd rather have that in our pocket if we do and everyone understands. If what we believe is a bookkeeping and administrative item is not, I would like to go forward with the Phase 2. But on all likelihood, we're not going to go to Phase 2.
Okay, Tom, can you?
Can I ask a question really quick? When you send that letter typically, doesn't DEP recognize that they've received a letter and send CC at least to township or the municipality involved? Does the township have any copy of or a record of that letter being in receipt by DEP?
There's nothing in the file on the township.
It's, again, we're talking about something that happened almost 25 years ago.
No, I know. I've gone through this and I've had to keep the records for over 30 years.
Yeah, and I think they should too. And I'm thrilled they did keep records, it's just they may not have kept all of them.
Gotcha.
So we are going to deal with the engineers. Because there are record numbers on some of these letters, they're going to reach out to the environmental company that did the removal and they're going to reach out to the state one more time to see if those things are there. I did send another email to the broker asking for him to look further. Not received response to that, so. But in all likelihood, that's what's going to happen. So they'll either tell us that it can be done or we might have to do test borings to prove there's nothing in the ground. But that's the worst we would have to do and that's part of a Phase 2. I do not expect that from what the emails I've seen going back and forth. But as I said, I think the prudent thing to do is to authorize Craig to engage the Phase 2 if necessary. Because we're kind of like the 99% issue, it doesn't appear. The engineers have recommended that we don't need it, but that's because if something comes back from DEP, I'd like to be able to go forward.
Okay. Tom, could you talk briefly about the difference between Phase 1 and the Phase 2 and why a township would even require a Phase 2 for members of the audience?
Phase 1, a Phase 1 examination is a record check. It's a record check that you check. The list is in there, I would hate to try to give you a list of what records they checked, but there's quite a few they checked. The state maintains maps of underground storage tanks. The state have maps of environmental issues. Like one of the ones they were talking about was another property, not on this site, but was a dry cleaner. Dry cleaners are toxic sites, so they get listed and you have to check them. So it's a desktop study basically, plus a casual field investigation. They do go out, see if there's anything obvious, like, you know, activities on the property that do not appear to have been listed. They see if there's vent tanks for vents or vent pipes for. In this case, they did the field examination and did not find anything out of the ordinary except the GST, the USD, the underground storage tank, USD. And Phase 2 is an actual investigation. They will go out with a crane and dig holes where they think the pipe, where the tank was and take test borings to see if the ground is contaminated. So that's the difference. Phase 1 is a desktop study with just a casual field investigation to see if there's any red flags. If you find a red flag, then you go to Stage 2 and actually dig up the ground where the tank was believed to have been.
And this happens when a township purchases a piece of property, is that correct?
Actually, it happens in any commercial transaction, it's required. And it's routine to do that now because of prudence. You don't want to buy a gas station, for example. You'll go, if you buy a gas station, you're doing a Phase 2 and maybe more. It's just easier to be sure. The other issue about not doing a Phase 1 investigation is, I don't think it'll be an impact for the township, but the, if you did not do due diligence when you bought your property, you could be liable in the chain of those that are responsible for the cleanup costs. Of course, that's only going to be a problem for you if you decide to sell the ground. You know, I don't think that's likely, certainly not likely in your future. But so you're going to be on the hook anyway for the environmental costs if they're there, with or without due diligence. But you do have to do due diligence to prove it. If you were to do a commercial loan, again, you're not doing that. The banking authorities for commercial properties, real estate development sites for your land developments will require an environmental investigation of some kind to prove there's nothing there. So it's really a routine item today.
Okay, thank you for that. So do the supervisors have any comments? Okay, can I have a motion to accept the authorization, given everything that we just heard?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Thank you very much. Motion passes.
That's just to confirm Gilmore to do the work for $9,800 should they need to do the Phase 2 study at 409 Old Bethlehem Pike.
Correct. Next item on the agenda is a recommendation by Parks and Rec Board for the purchase and installation of dog waste stations and bag sets locations around the township. Craig or members of the Park and Rec, one of the supervisors would like to comment? That would be fine. Don't you go ahead, Craig?
This was a memo sent over to us back in March about the Parker Rec Board thought it was a good idea to have the dog waste stations at five locations, two at Turellan Estates Trail, two at Penn Ambler Park and one at Turellan Farms. Total cost is $513 plus shipping to install these. It would be installed above the trashcans at all the entrances or the five entrances that we, I just mentioned. And that was recommended by the Parker Rec Board, just as a courtesy. I guess they were getting some complaints that people weren't picking up after their dog and they thought maybe this would entice them to do so.
Yeah, it's a little concerned about having a separate station, but I looked at the recommendations and saw that it was going to be at trashcan locations.
Yes.
So there shouldn't be much of, if any, additional work for staff to, you know, maintain the stations. And I thought that was a pretty good recommendation too. So can, do any of the members of the Board of Supervisors have any questions or comments?
I just wanted to, just, I guess it's a comment and a question. In reading the recommendation, it indicated these were like test locations of high-traffic areas where there was trash waste in. And to put them there, is there any recommendation or how will we make the determination to expand it? I just know that there were certain areas that had almost requested it that extend beyond the areas that we're identifying right now. And how and which are we going to measure any potential expansion?
Because we'll see if it's successful and if we get more complaints. I don't, I'm not sure how the Parker Rec Board determined the five other than it was located at, you know, high-usage trails. And that was their recommendation for these five.
So are we going to get a report back, Craig, from our Parker Rec Director? Is she going to keep track of all of this?
Sure, yep.
How long do you expect that test will take? Do we know?
Well, I would imagine they would look at it in the fall after it's installed for a couple of months and go from there, determine the rest of the locations.
Okay. Does anybody else on the call have any questions? Members of the public? Okay.
I have another follow-up question. So how long will it take for them to be installed?
They would, once it comes in, I can't imagine it's going to take long. It's going to take, you know, four screws or two screws on each one.
Okay, so within a month, it could potentially be installed?
I would imagine, yes.
So by the end of August, we'll have a good idea if it's effective or not?
I would imagine, yes.
Okay. Is there, is there the availability to add an additional site? Or does it, is it clearly stating that only if there's a trash bin already there?
We could always add a trash can and a site, I mean.
Do we have cost for that? No?
We don't.
Okay.
But.
The specific site I'm talking about is off of McKean Road, the development down there near where we store our snow removal and near the Ingalls House, or the old, I call it the Ingalls House. I don't know if that's the appropriate name. But at the bottom of that development, there's an area that a lot of people that live in those areas kind of walk their dog. And they had an accumulation that was kind of severe of dog waste. And they had requested many times.
Okay, we can look at that. Then that was sent to the Parker Rec Board or they know about it?
I don't believe they do. I mean, they might, I'm not going to speak on their behalf, I'm not sure if they do. Hi.
Okay, let's amend this motion then to add an additional station so we don't have to have another vote, Craig. And you'll get back to us and let us know what the recommendation is. But we can then, that way, proceed with the purchasing of the additional equipment. Do I have a motion?
So we'll say six stations at roughly $650 and ship it.
$650 total?
Correct, yeah.
Yeah, sure. That's what I'm saying we do. And you'll let us know. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Accept the resolution?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. Jamie, can you give Ed a call? He keeps calling me and I need to listen to the dialogue so I can make an informed vote. He's still trying to get on.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. Next on the agenda is a resolution for the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development. It's a request for a grant for $300,000. Craig, could you give us some detail, please?
I can give you a little bit of detail. I was going to pass this off to Jamie, but she's talking to Ed, so.
I'm sorry.
This is a grant for the PADCD, the Watershed Restoration and Protection Program. The grant is up to $300,000. We did not have a cost estimate as of last Thursday or Friday. Gilmore was working on that estimate. It did come in at somewhere, I believe it's around $180,000, $200,000. It's for stream bank restoration behind the township building on Old Bethlehem Pike between the Ingersoll, the old Ingersoll, or the Ingersoll House, I guess, underneath Old Bethlehem Pike and going toward Payone's Building. We will also need a construction easement from Payone, temporary construction easement and a full maintenance easement on the property or on the creek bed. So we can stabilize the creek bed and we can do any maintenance on the creek bed in the future. We don't see that becoming a problem. We're not taking down any trees, we're not taking, you know, any land. We're not, you know, even using his parking lot to get there. But, so all that stuff has to be done. Jamie, I stole your thunder here. I said you were going to do it and you were on the phone. So I don't know if you want to add or just say what you were going to say anyway, so.
Um, yeah, I was trying, I wasn't following what you said. But basically, it's just a stream bank restoration project. It's for the Willow Run Tributary that goes to the Wissahick and Creek. And it's the segment of stream directly located behind the township building. And the scope of the project is stabilization and enhancement, approximately 300 linear feet of stream on both sides, from 100 feet upstream of the Old Bethlehem Pike Bridge and 200 feet downstream. It's bank grading to provide increased floodplain, boulder toe protection, rip raft protection, and live stakes will be installed along the bank.
So.
It's compatible with DEP, it's all, you know, it's all approved by, the design is a low pack impact design through DEP.
So why this stretch? Is it one of the more severely impaired sections in our township or?
It's a good project for this location and this type of grant. I think we can kind of get, well, we did outline this in our pollution reduction plan. So it's already kind of a project that we put as a, you know, possibility. We think that it's a good bang for your buck, but it's a good project to meet the reduction requirements. Well, to help chip away at them, I would say.
Jamie, does any of that distance, you said 100 feet upstream from the bridge, does that include any of the dams behind, the dam works behind the Ingersoll House in that stream or no?
No.
Yeah, the number's too low for that, I thought. So you're going to stream, it's going to be restoration right after the dam set? That's what you're saying?
Yep.
Okay. Is there any, is there any grants available for addressing that old dam there or don't you know?
Um, there are, I'm sure. It's just a matter of investigating what's out there and honing in on a project. I mean, this was like a specific project that we could submit an application for. We'd have to pull together what exactly we would do at that location and then see, you know, look and see what types of things out there can help fund something like that.
What's the deadline for this grant application? And is the township required to come up with any matching funds?
The deadline originally was May 31st, but due to the COVID, it's been pushed back to July 31st. And it is a, I believe it's a 15% match.
So we're talking, you said it's roughly 180 to 200, well, Craig said it 180 to 200,000?
Yeah, we're putting in for the max right now because the cost estimate hasn't been finalized. So what will happen is before we submit it, we'll have to put, we'll submit along with it a letter of funding recommendation from the township. So in that letter is when we would, we would put the specific amount of the grant that we're requesting.
I place this on the agenda because the deadline was the 31st and of May and thought we were just put in for the resolution up to $300,000, knowing we were not going for the full $300,000.
What's the cap on the grant?
$300,000.
Are there any more questions from supervisors?
Is this a one-time grant or can we reapply for additional monies?
Um, this, I mean, it's all depending on how long it's funded. But this grant has come around, usually the grant guidelines are issued in November for the following year. So for the past few years, it has come up. They open it up in like February usually. So there is the potential that this, you know, you could go in for this grant again next year. It's annual, it's not.
Just as, just as an aside question, I know that we haven't approved the resolution, but have we sought letters of recommendation or letters of support from senators or state reps?
We always, yes, we will. We haven't done that portion of it yet, but we always require them whenever we submit anything.
Are there any more questions from the supervisors? Are there any questions from members of the public?
This is Mark Schaefer, just to comment. Since Willow Run feeds into the Wissahick and Wissahick and Trails, I'm sure to be happy to also submit letters of recommendation or suggestion. And I also wondered, would there be an opportunity to do kind of a before and after of this remediation to get some quantitative results of we did this and this is what the result was? So we have that information for the state when we have to go back and talk about a remediation plan.
Jamie?
Um, yeah, I mean, we do have projections of what we think of this project, you know, what we believe it would be reducing. But we can certainly, monitoring, ongoing monitoring is required. We're required to do that under our MS4 permit and under our pollution reduction program. So we can certainly, you know, gather the information ahead of time and then go take a look once it's, once everything is complete and see if we are in fact noticing, you know, real measurable progress.
Great, thank you.
Are there any more questions to the public? All right, do I have a motion to accept the resolution?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Thank you. I'm going to change the agenda just a little bit.
Talking to you, I'll call you when it's through.
I have Chief Kenny on the phone here, on the screen. Chief, can you tell us how our police departments holding up? Any issues, concerns? Are they all in good health?
Everybody's doing great. I feel like I'm giving the same update.
I feel like I'm giving the same update every two weeks here.
But that's good news.
It's good news. Calls are still down. Everybody's healthy, everybody is at work. We haven't had any, any issues at all. We're still monitoring. From the beginning of this till now, things have really changed in sharing of information. I mean, now rate as soon as the call for any facility or residence, we're being notified instantly over the radio of any concerns that exist inside the building. Some of them, they even go so far as to say, you know, remain outside unless absolutely necessary. So things have changed that way. Guys are still doing everything that I've asked them to do. We're still doing a lot of hand washing, still cleaning the cars, doing everything. I don't want us to feel like it's over because I think it would be very easy to fall into that mindset that everything's fine because, you know, things are opening back up. So, but we're continuing on a, you know, status of, you know, still be careful. Wear all the P P E and continue to clean all surfaces, clean everything in the car, clean yourself. And still, when we do have contact, we're still recording it. So if something does come back later, we'll know what officers we have to address this with. So other than that, things are going really good.
That's all good news. That's the kind of news we like to hear, for sure. Okay, public comments section for anything that's not on the agenda. Does any member of the public have any questions, concerns or issues?
Anyone can raise their hand or go to the chat box or email, contact us. I don't see anything.
Okay. All right, we'll take that as a no. Managers report.
Yes, just a couple of things. Sent an email out today that longtime employee Joyce Hammershock passed away over the weekend.
Oh.
And I don't have much more information. It was a, a Facebook notice from her daughter that someone forwarded to me. So, but once I have more information on that, I will forward to everyone. But she worked at the township for a long time. I'm not really sure how long. I tried to look that up today, but I could not find her date of hire. So, so just thinking of her. And just that we have the solicitors interviews next week with the board. I know originally we, I sent out the invite or, or I sent out the, the interview request to the firms and said that we would do it in person. If not, we would do it virtual. If everyone's fine with doing it virtual, I will continue with that move. So there's seven firms. I think we have three nights. I think it's the third, third, fourth and ninth, I think are the three nights. So unless someone has a problem with doing it virtually, I will change all those times to a virtual Zoom meeting.
Okay. That sounds like a plan.
Okay.
Okay.
And that's, that's all I have.
I don't think there's anything else on the agenda. Would any of the supervisors like to make a comment? Kath, serve you.
I'll just say, thank goodness it's summer. It's just going to be a different one, but it's summer and I'm not even going to go into the whole COVID other than thanking all of our residents for your patience and your cooperation with the whole situation.
Danielle?
I had a couple, couple of things I wanted to address. The first one was, I know that we had gotten a couple emails as supervisors from members of the public, just with questions or concerns around the whole solicitor process and the R F P, R F Q process. And concerns, I guess, with why the previous solicitor's contract wasn't renewed or they use different language. I just wanted to again clarify that the R F P or the R F Q process is one where you're, you're asked for a request for all qualified individuals to be able to submit their qualifications for consideration. It does not exclude our previous solicitor. It actually includes our previous solicitor. And it gives all qualified bodies, the opportunity or organizations or individuals, in this case solicitor, the opportunity to be considered. And that was done way back at our first meeting. I think it was on January 6th. Obviously, there's been some delays due to the, to the pandemic and the emergency declaration is how we needed to proceed. But the purpose of that was so that we can ensure that we are picking the best candidate for the township moving forward after considering everyone who feels that they are qualified to be our solicitor. The second thing I wanted to address is, I know the last meeting, we, we approved a motion to have banners being placed on Bethlehem Pike to honor our graduates. I wanted us to also consider, or I wanted to make a motion for us to consider a resolution recognizing all 200, you know, 2020 graduates from universities, high schools, regardless of where, for what they had to overcome and endure in order to get to this point. And it's a huge accomplishment that I think we should recognize formally in a resolution. I know that we don't have the resolution today, but I wanted to make a motion so that we could draft a resolution recognizing 2020 graduates.
I, I think that's a very good idea. This is a very different graduation season, that's for sure. Craig, can we have a proclamation put together so we could all vote on the proclamation for our next meeting?
Yes.
Yeah, we can do that. Does all the supervisors agree? You have a second?
I think it's a wonderful idea. How difficult would it be to have copies sent to each graduate?
That's what I was thinking, but I don't know how, they would almost have to self identify because some of the schools are reluctant to give their names. Because they're 17 and not quite 18. But to anyone that would self identify, I think that they deserve a copy of the proclamation.
I guess we could say, anyone that wants it, they can contact the township and we would send it to them.
That would be awesome.
Yeah, we'll figure that out.
That sounds like, I think that's a very good idea. Can you have that prepared for the next meeting, Craig?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Danielle. Appreciate it, that's a good idea.
Thank you. And thank you, everybody else, for your continued support in, you know, all of our emergency staff and our police force for all that they're doing. They've done an awesome job. So I just wanted to thank everybody.
I think we all agree with that and we're all very pleased and happy and grateful that, you know, members of the lower Quiddit community appear to be, you know, knock on wood here, appear to be in a very good position. And we're blessed with very many great staff members and great EMS members. And, you know, times like this is when you really understand what you have as opposed to just assuming it. Tessie?
Mark, can I interrupt and follow what Danielle said there?
Sure, go ahead.
And just checking with Craig. Craig, was the email forwarded to the board for next Thursday?
The email? The parade route was sent out, yes.
Yeah.
On the website, on social media, in the manager's report and everything, yes.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure everybody was aware of that.
Yeah.
And just following Danielle's lead there when she mentioned the high school to let her, let her, you know, we are involved. It's going to be a really special couple of hours for the whole class.
And I did order the banners. I ordered them on Saturday this week, but, and they will be in before the 4th and we'll have them up before the 4th, so.
Great.
Craig, do you have to do a P A one call to put that up at B N W?
Yes.
Did you get the, the email confirmation?
I did not, I did not.
I'll make sure you get that.
Okay.
Craig, Ed Brandt has a question about the, whether or not the banners would be up before this parade.
Yes, that's what I just said, June 4th, yep.
So they will be up in time, okay.
Yep, that was the, I said I couldn't approve it if it's going to come in June 12th, so.
Okay.
So they agreed to it.
Okay, sounds good, I'll let him know.
He said they'll have it done this week.
Okay, great, thank you. Tessie, your turn.
Thanks. I, I would like to echo previous remarks about thanking our emergency staff as well as our township staff for maintaining the high level of excellence during this COVID situation. I'd also like to reiterate something I said in the last Board of Supervisor meeting to remind people that we do have an election coming up. There's some real logistical problems with this election. So it's going to take maybe extra effort to get to the polls or to make sure you get your mail in ballot in on time. So please be aware of that. This could be a, a front runner for what we're going to face in November. So the better we can do now to, to work through these logistics, the better off we'll be in November. So I just encourage everyone to vote. Don't take this election for granted. It is important and important especially that we can understand how to vote in this environment. So that's all.
Okay, thank you for that. Ed Brandt, I see that you have joined us. Looks like you had some technical difficulties, but we're at the end of the meeting here. Do you have any comments you'd like to share with anybody?
And he is, he is unable to, he can hear and see everybody, but we can't hear him. So I can, yeah, I'm on, I have him on the phone, so I can check with him and see if he has any comment. Do you have any comments you would like to share, Ed?
Jamie, can you put him on the speakerphone? That'll qualify for him voting. All right.
No, I can't, I don't have him on here now. I'm sorry, he just wanted to let everybody know that he, he thought everything was handled just fine and he, he wouldn't have had to change, his vote would have been the same as everything that took place this evening.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. I appreciate that, joining us.
Did we vote on the dog waste?
Yes.
Yeah.
I thought I missed that.
Yes, we actually added another waste bin and another trash bin.
Okay. I knew we, but the motion wasn't, it was voted upon. That's all because Kathy had asked to hold her vote until someone got on the line, but.
No, you misunderstood. I think I seconded the motion, actually.
It was Danielle made the motion, Kathy seconded it, and it was, I have four, nothing. I, I didn't hear Ed.
Right. All right, good. Thanks for checking, Tom, you're keeping us honest.
You know, I just keep bad notes, that's all.
You mean you like the rest of us, right?
All faddable, we knew that.
Yeah, so I think we're done for the evening. I'd like to thank everyone for attending and the Zoom meetings are getting better. And the connections seem to be getting better. So we'll probably have this down perfectly when they end, we go back to face to face. So everybody have a good evening.
There's Ed.
Hey, Ed, can you hear us?
No.
He can hear us, but I, he can't, he's not, his microphone's not picking up. But that's all right. That's all right, at least he's able to participate in the, in the meeting. So thank you, everybody, for attending and have a nice evening.
Have a good night.
Thank you very much.
Be well home.
Good night.
Bye.
Thank you.
Good night.